And I'll put my microphone on, which is something I was going to tell you that you need to do when you speak, but don't follow my example, just use common sense. So I'm David Barker, I'm chairing the subcommittee this morning, to my left and right are the members of the subcommittee, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Good morning, councillor Vicky Priestley.
Marouf Ralph.
And we have a number of officers working with us this morning, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Morning Samantha, I'm legal advisor to the subcommittee.
I'm Clive Stevenson from the licensing service.
And could I ask the applicants first and any interested parties just to introduce yourselves for the record please?
Good morning Chair, I'm Michelle Hazelwood from John Gorton Partners and I'm here to represent the applicant.
And I'm Shaun Fogg from West Street Leisure Limited.
Will the applicants, the interested parties like to introduce yourselves please?
Thank, yeah, I'm not down to speak, I'm just here as a city centre representative for the residents again.
You're always very welcome to come and see us.
Very much, that's very kind of you.
The meeting today has been webcast, which is one of the reasons to use the microphone, and also the other reason being the acoustics in this room are not great, so if you could remember to use the microphone when you speak, that would be helpful. We have a fairly straightforward procedure for these hearings, and you'll see at point four of that procedure, that the solicitors to the committee will outline the procedure, which is great, because it saves me having to read it out. So Sam, would you like to outline the procedure please?
Thank you, just before I do, has everyone got a copy of the papers before them? Do you want a copy, it might be easier if we start referring, lovely, Jenny if you're all right to chuck a pack over, that'd be fab. Okay lovely, so the procedure's just right at the back of the pack on page 103, so the procedure this morning, Clive the licensing officer will introduce the report, if there are any questions concerning the report, that's a time to raise them, so if there's anything that's inaccurate in there, and we'll get that amended for the minutes. We'll then head over to the interested parties to detail their relevant representations as listed in the report, members and officers may have questions of interested parties, and, oh we're not doing a review are we, sorry, I've gone straight to review, and once we've done that, with the leave of the chair, the applicant and his representative may cross-examine the interested parties, I'm back on track now, apologies, it's Monday. We'll then head over to the applicant to detail their application as listed in the report, provide clarification on the application, and respond to any representations made, both in the hearing and within the report. There'll be an opportunity for questions from members, excuse me, and with the leave of the chair from interested parties present, the applicant will then be given the opportunity to sum up the application, we'll then take the options from Clive as detailed in the report, and members will go into private session to take legal advice and consider the application. The decision of the licensing committee this morning will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members may request legal advice, so that can be an open session as we are now, or private where we'll probably pause the recording and just ask everyone to wait outside while members take that legal advice, which will then feed back to you once you come back into the room. And as Clive already said, the hearing is in public this morning, and we are being live webcast, hopefully that's all okay relatively straightforward, thank you.
Thank you Sam, I didn't think you were going to get through that, but you managed, so can we go over to Clive, who I'd like to thank for stepping in at the very last minute today as well, so could you present the report to us please Clive?
Yes, thank you Chair, yes apologies for that, I'm a late replacement unfortunately, so I will try and deal with questions if I can, but I've only just got the papers at 10.30 last night, so I do apologise for that. Yes Chair, thank you, this is case 83 of League 22, it's to consider an application for a grant of premises licence, or a shadow licence, made under section 17 of the Licensing Act 2003. The application is made by West Street Leisure Limited, who are the landlords of the building within which the current premises licence operates. The application was received by the Licence Service on the 4th of October 2021, it's attached at appendix A of the report. As the premises is already licensed and operating in the city centre, the application is for a shadow licence, which is of what is already in place, with all the terms in the current licence being exactly mirrored in the application. The landlord wishes to safeguard the premises in the event of the licence becomes at risk in the future, following an instance where the previous premises licence, or the premises licence relapsed, sorry, due to difficulties suffered by the previous operators, and then the licence fell away. The current existing premises licence has been included in this report and we can found it appendix B Chair, and the reasons for referral, and why we're here today, is there's an unresolved representation by Mr Booth, a local resident, initially there were further objections from Environmental Protection Services EPS, another local resident group, change in chef. These objections were made under the objective of prevention of public nuisance, and there has been a history of noise complaints from this premises chair. The plan submitted with the application did not reflect the current layout of the premises, with an acoustic sound lobby being missing within the premises itself due to the doors opening in the incorrect direction. It was agreed with all parties at the end of the application consultation period, that a hearing for the determination of this application could be deferred to allow the works within the premises to be completed, therefore negating and resolving those objections. Works we believe have now been completed, with EPS and change in chef withdrawing their objections. The remaining resident has maintained their objections, and they have kept a lot of noise breakouts since the works have been completed, which is a continuing cause for nuisance to them. Local residents who have raised concerns are aware of the review process in the event that the determination is in favour of the applicant, and noise issues continue. The applicant and the objectors who have made written representations have both been invited today, as we can tell, they're here today to give their representations, and copies of the front page of the notices are attached to this report labelled appendix D. Policies to consider Chair, are your statement of licensing policy, there are no financial indications regarding this report today and this hearing today, the legal position is in section six, can't go through those for everybody present, the hearing regulations are detailed at seven, and appeals are detailed at eight, and will be detailed at the end of the hearing depending on the outcome of the hearing today by Sam. And our recommendations Chair, you carefully consider the representation areas from all parties present, and you take such steps, the subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives.
Thank you Clive, have members got any questions regarding the report at all? Does the applicant have any questions regarding the report?
No sir.
And do the interested parties have any questions regarding the report at all?
About this report?
Yeah, any questions on the report itself?
No, just something that Clive has just said, that all works have been completed, that isn't true.
Right. So it's over to you then Mr Booth, to outline your objections to us this morning.
Okay, a year ago today, I'll try to keep it as brief as I can, but a year ago today, we heard noise from the outside of Olivia's, and tried to make a complaint to the people running the bar at the outside, but they basically didn't respond in a very good way, and continued to play music, so it was a year ago today. After that time, I have taken lots of photographs, videos, and the combination of those I sent to licensing, as part of my objection to this licence, I think on the 1st of November. My main objections are that they are, the Olivia's bar are not adhering to the conditions, they're breaching conditions 13, 15, 16, 18 and 19 consistently. In many email exchanges between myself and licensing, it seems clear that the applicant has apologised several times, and said, I will sort this out, but it's never been sorted out, so things, for example, the doors to the front on West Street should open outwards, according to fire regulations, they don't, they open inwards, I believe that the doors can open in and out, but the doorman and the DPS, it seems, want the doors to be propped open inwards. That's one of the major issues, because when EPS tests the sound level, they're testing it with all the doors shut, so obviously there's a difference if the doors are propped open all night until three o'clock in the morning. We know that the music is coming from there, because all the other bars are closed by one half one, and so that was one issue. The other issue was the rear doors, the rear acoustic lobby, the doors to there were also open, so we had the front doors open and the rear doors open. The issue with that was slightly better during the winter months, because they didn't use the outside area at the back, but the first opportunity that they had, and they'd obviously spent quite a lot of money putting fire pits in and changing the whole arrangement of the outside, the first opportunity they had, after painting everything, was 14th of May, and there was music that I couldn't, it was extremely loud, and I videoed that and sent that to licensing, and you couldn't escape from it, and that was for six or seven hours continuously, and that was on 14th of May. So, again, the applicant apologised for that, but I don't believe that the applicant is really controlling what's happening in that bar, and I don't believe that the managers are at all being proactive to noise control, and there was some reason why the amplifier had to be turned up that loud, because apparently the other amplifier wasn't working, but in my opinion, in anybody's opinion if you heard it, you would know that it was impossible to not know that that was too loud. And really, over the winter, I've taken other photographs that I haven't sent to licensing, because in November licensing said that they'd made an agreement, and that the applicant was going to rectify these problems, rectify the door being able to open outwards, and there was a problem, apparently the sign was too low, that was rectified, but ever since then, there aren't any handles on the outside of the door, so as the doorman is stood outside of the property on West Street, the doorman wouldn't be able to open the door for the customers from the outside, because there are no handles on the outside, so the only way that it could be opened is to push the door. I do question why a customer can't push a door, unless they're disabled, but I do question why any customer wouldn't be able to push a door open to enter a club or a nightclub. So in summary, I believe that the outside music in any premises near to residential area, which it is, should not be allowed at all, I don't think that any outside speakers should be given permission to be operated in any area that is close to residential area, and I also don't think that any, although you've given the licence previously, I don't think that any licensed premises should be open until 3am every day, even though Olivia's is not open every day now, but the licence, it's a red line that is drawn on Fitzwilliam Street, which is directly below where I live, so I think that that is probably a question for somebody further down the line, but the opening of this club until three o'clock in the morning has had a detrimental effect on our mental health and others in West One as well. And so there are two things, the breaching of conditions, the effect on us not being able to sleep or being woken up, and therefore it's a cumulative effect, and the effect on our mental health as a resident in this area. And I will add that we've lived there for 19 years, so we know what the area is like, and when it used to be varsity and bar and beyond, we never had a problem at all, we were never woken up, and so it is specifically this, the way that this bar, Olivia's, is being managed and run. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Booth, that's really helpful, do members have any questions Vicky for Mr Booth?
Sorry, could you just confirm how long you've lived at your property?
We've lived at the property for 19 years.
Alright, and thank you, just in regards to the doors, could you just confirm whether there are any handles that allow the door to be opened outwards?
No, there are no doors on the outside to allow the doors to be opened from the outside, there are handles on the inside, but the doorman stands outside.
And do you have any evidence of the doors being propped open inwards on a regular occurrence?
Yes, lots.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of this seems to be down to not adhering to existing conditions, as opposed to the need for newer conditions, or it seems to be, am I getting that right?
Well, some of the conditions I believe shouldn't be there, but that's an issue more for licensing and the council, and a much bigger question about three o'clock opening in a residential area, but yes, you're quite correct.
And can I check, you've raised these directly with the manager, did you say you've also raised concerns with the applicant here today, or is it just with the management of the venue?
No, because I've never met the owner or the applicant, I didn't know who they were until today.
And is it fair to say, from what you're saying, that when you raise these with the premises, they're apologetic, they say they'll do things differently, and nothing changes, is that the thing to be?
I spoke to the premises on the 30th of May last year, so a year ago today, and I realised from their attitude to us, that, well, they didn't turn the music down on that day, and I realised that that was not the way that I was going to get anything done. My partner had spoken to them on more than one occasion, and still got a very negative response, things like, we can play music whenever we want and as loud as we want, there's nothing you can do about it, nothing any residents can do about it. So when you get that kind of response from the people operating, directly, I'm not talking about the applicant, the managers or manager, then, and also if they refuse to tell you who they are, then it's very difficult to make a complaint, because you don't know actually who you're speaking to. So that's why I went through the route of making a formal complaint to licensing.
Can I just, having made the formal complaint and still, things don't appear to be getting any better at all, have you ever considered actually requesting a formal review of the licence, which means that it could come here and we could actually take a whole manner of action up to and including sort of revoking the licence if we felt it was necessary?
I haven't been advised that I could do that, I wasn't aware until you've just said it, that I could do that, and what the process was.
Well, that's something we'll certainly have a chat to you about, but certainly, the Licensing Act is, as I'm sure you're aware, is evidence based, and when people apply for a new licence, it's very difficult to find real evidence of problems, you appear to have collected a lot of evidence, and where the act comes into its own is when you've got that evidence, the committee here today could actually take action against the managers and the premises to rectify those issues, you know, we would encourage you to do what you've done, and most of the time that does resolve things, but it clearly isn't working in this case, so maybe a review of this existing licence might be something that could well be considered, and we'll talk about that later, but. So if there are no further questions from members, do the applicants have any questions for the interested parties?
Yes Chair, I just have one, the objector has made clear reference to the word applicant, but I would like clarity, can you confirm who you actually emailed spoke to when you raised the concerns?
I raised concerns and sent an email to licensing, I didn't have any contact email for the applicant.
But when you say you complained to the applicant about the noise, you explicitly said that you'd complained to the applicant, what I'm trying to determine is who you think the applicant is?
I assumed, I don't know whether I've said that, maybe that was a mistake in what I said, I haven't complained directly to the applicant, I assume that the applicant is the person that runs the bar.
Sir, I can address that in my formal submission, but I think at this point it's worth just getting that clarity, that the objector is misconstruing who the applicant is, thank you.
Well, I don't know why, who is the applicant?
The applicant is actually, I'd be correct if I'm wrong, I'm sure you're, it's the landlord of the site, not the person who runs the premises, the reason for this application...
Sorry, I didn't know that, and you know, how could I be expected to know that? I assumed it was the bar that was the applicant, so this is my first time, so sorry.
Now, this application is for a shadow licence, mirroring the existing licence, but in case that licence lapsed and isn't transferred to anyone else, then this would mean that the landlord wouldn't have to go through the whole process of applying for a new licence, because the shadow licence would be in place and new tenants could be brought in and the club operated under that licence.
I didn't understand that, I didn't understand what a shadow licence was, and you know, it's a matter of whether I wanted to spend hours and hours looking through it all again, and you know, unfortunately I haven't had the time to do that, or the willingness to do that, but if you're saying to me now the applicant is Mr Hogg, then I accept that. It's the operator, if you like, that we and I have an issue with.
Clearly, it would be nice to do something about that issue, I have to say, I've done licensing for 15 years, and it's only the second time I've ever come across a shadow licence application, so it's not something that we do see a lot of, so we don't expect you to be an expert on the Licensing Act. But at that stage, we'll now pass on to the applicant to detail your application please.
Thank you Chair, good morning everybody, as you've just identified the nuts and bolts of the application very succinctly sir, that I will try to explain a little bit more. So my client is a company, which is an investment property company, so they own numerous properties around Sheffield, some of which are hospitality based, some of which are retail based, and as with all companies, they seek to protect their asset base, it's profit and loss, it's the balance sheet, and if you have a hospitality premises which doesn't have a licence attached to it, then the value of the asset is diminished, and there are only a few ways to ensure the value of your asset, for want of a better description. So in this instance, and my clients have suffered from this previously, in 2014, a licence was simply surrendered by the outgoing tenant, handed into the town hall and walked away from, before he got to know within the 20, well I think at that time it was only a seven day period, we now have 28 days to reinstate, but the licence was lost, the licence had to be reapplied for, and then in 2019, the premises was rented by Deltic, who went into administration, and once again, the licence lapsed and had to be reapplied for. So my client has been through the process of losing the value, value added element of his asset twice, and last October he was sat there looking at the economy, and we were coming out of Covid, and we were looking forward to the economy waking up, but there was lots of risks, we got Omicron on the horizon, we didn't know how the economy would return, would people go back to using late night venues, lots and lots of questions, and as a good businessman, he decided that he would look at ensuring his assets as best as he could. Shadow licences happen all the time in London, they have been a very London centric phenomenon, Grosvenor Estates, the Crown Estate, use them to protect their assets particularly in the City of London, and it's well used down there. You can do a registration of interest, but if somebody surrenders, it doesn't really work, there's lots of problems with that, so the bolt, the nuts and bolts, the belt and braces approach is to do a shadow licence, so that if a licence does disappear, review and revocation as well, which hasn't happened on this site yet, but is another option, then my client can go straight to marketing his asset, he doesn't have to worry about conditionality of contracts, and he can move straightforward to running his commercial business as a commercial landlord, and that is the rationale behind having a shadow licence. He has not isolated, Olivia's is the only place to do this, he has already secured a shadow licence on Viper Rooms, which is one of his other venues, and a venue which is on a shorter term lease is put into his own company name, but it is about insurance of asset base, nothing more, nothing less, and to support that point, what we've done in submitting this application is absolutely mirror the licence terms which have been approved on at least two occasions in recent times, and which have been through the trauma and process and interrogation of hearings in the past. So the conditions on this licence is a comprehensive suite, which would promote the licensing objectives, and I think you've heard directly from the objector that actually if compliance with the conditions were maintained, there probably would be little to no public nuisance arising. So the conditions work, the objector's confirmed, but the conditions are worded right as long as complied with. So the conditions work, the objectors confirm, but the conditions are worded right as long as complied with. So my client, the applicant, is the landlord. He is not the operator. He is not the manager of the site. So the question then may arise in your minds, well, what happens if this licence has to come into play? What are the protections for the residents? Well, we have a licence which has been verified, approved and looked at before, found to be appropriate, proportionate in its content and suitable for the environment. But we have not in the application added the designated premises supervisor. So this licence, if granted today, cannot operate immediately. There would have to be a variation to appoint the DPS. And that allows an opportunity for South Yorkshire Police and your licensing team to look at the incoming operator and interrogate that person and ensure that they are suitable and appropriate for maintaining the licence and promoting the licensing objectives. So there is a break system in the process because of the way we've done it, to try and give everybody confidence. Also, my client, when he does a long lease, a 10 year lease, et cetera, he doesn't want to hold that licence in his own name because the responsibility goes to the operator. At that point, a transfer of the licence would be required. And again, South Yorkshire Police would be able to interrogate that application as to the suitability of the applicant and make sure we've got somebody coming in who would uphold the conditions and the terms of the licence. So there is some comfort blanket in this application. But what I would submit is that the objectors have raised information. They've raised concerns, but in the terms of this application and under the licensing act and under the guidance, they have not raised evidence against the applicant and the application itself. Their evidence, information is against another, the existing premises licence holder. As you well know, sir, this is not a review, this is a new licence application. And you have to determine on the evidence before you as to the application and the applicant. And I would, I can go into the evidence which has been submitted. I can talk about the times that the photos were taken and whether that would prompt public nuisance. But actually, I don't think I need to do that because that evidence is not actually pertinent to the application before you. The application before you is for a shadow licence, which will not operate until a DPS is appointed, is unlikely to be used unless the existing licence disappears for whatever reason and has content which has been approved by yourselves, the committee, on at least two previous occasions. In support of that, I would say a positive coming out of this application has been that the door situation has been raised. My client was unaware of that. He's a long arm distance landlord. But the involvement of Jonathan Round and the EPS team has meant that the doors have been addressed. People have been spoken to and hopefully therefore the situation will improve. It's an unintended consequence, shall we say, of this application. Equally, I'm sure the landlord will talk to the operator, his tenant. But it has to be acknowledged that the terms of the lease are the rulebook between my client, the applicant, and the current premises licence holder. And so the lease will stipulate, as most commercial leases do, the payment of rent, the upholding of covenant. But it will not drill down to the wording of conditions on the licence or policies and documentation. That is not the vehicle that it is used for. It is a vehicle for a relationship between someone taking a property off somebody else and paying a rental for that and the burdens and benefits which come with that. But those are unintended consequences which can flow from this. I don't want to go on further, sir, because I do think this is almost a technical argument that we hear what the objectors are saying, but in fact the objections don't in reality bite against this application because of the nature of it. I think what the objectors have said is the conditions are robust. And if they were adhered to, they wouldn't suffer the problems which they say that they are suffering. But that almost verifies the quality of the conditions before you as part of this application. And therefore that means that this licence application would promote the licensing objectives and is suitable for grant today as a shadow licence. It almost, from what's been said, may come into play if review proceedings are activated. But it would save my clients a lot of heartache, distress, time and inconvenience by knowing that they have the licence already in place so that they can immediately continue with their business function. So I have my client here, the director of the company, we can answer any questions. But I hope that that answers and gives the application. I don't want to sound as though we're not interested in the concerns of the objectors, but I really don't think we can answer those points because we have no day to day knowledge of that operation at all.
Thank you. I will open this up to questions then now. Marouf, is there anything you would like to ask at this stage?
Not at this moment in time.
Okay. Certainly, welcome your offer to speak to the current operators. I mean, as landlord, is that something you do if there are concerns about the operation of one of your tenants? Would you generally take action to try and resolve that?
Yes, we would. I mean, it's important that we work with as tenants. And if it's jeopardising our position as the landlord, yes, we will take action.
And would you be happy to, Chair, contact details should that ever become necessary for someone in your organisation, not necessarily you, to be able to follow up with these sorts of concerns? Thank you. I have no further questions. Mr Bull, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Okay, I think that you mentioned that the licence was granted, well, I think it was 8th of June last year. Is that correct?
So there was a variation last year, which I believe was undertaken by the tenant because the licence is in their name as the premises licence holder, which was granted last year in June. That was a variation. But the previous Deltic administration was 17th of December 2020, which prompted the new licence application. And prior to that, the licence was surrendered in October 2014, when Electic Bars surrendered the licence. I think that's the chronology.
Okay. It's obviously confusing for somebody like me coming into this without any previous experience of looking at these things. So it's a bit of a minefield, but I think that's where I've got confused over who the applicant is. Because the previous one, I'm pretty sure had the word Bohemia at the top of it, which was another name for Olivia's. So when you see the word Bohemia at the top of the application, I assumed it was that. But none of that makes any difference because I wasn't aware, we weren't aware of this process at all until I started to look into it in July, August, September of last year. So we'd already missed the licensing committee meeting on the 8th of June. So we couldn't have made a complaint then anyway. And the amount of time that I've had to take to get my head around how to actually do this has been quite onerous. So it's taken me a lot of effort and time and reading just to get to this, to the point of being able to make the formal complaint in November. So it's not an easy process at all. But had I, the other issue, which I think that Jane Gough raised at the, I think way back in 2019, when the outside area, like, planning application was rejected, was that the, again, this is another issue more for the, for the way that things are run in the council or probably in England, is that the signs that go up often go on a lamppost for a month. And unless you walk down that street, unless you're looking at every lamppost, you'd never see it. Sometimes they're in the window of a property. But again, unless you actually, they're only up for so long. And unless you happen to be walking down there every day and you happen to be looking for that kind of thing, then, and spend your life looking for that kind of thing, then you're not going to see it. And so that's a different issue. So that's, you know, it was by May, I think, that the operator had only been operating for a month or so. And so sometimes you think, maybe, maybe it's a one off. And it wasn't until, like I said today, a year ago, 30th of May, that the problems became much more apparent, that some of the operators in the area we live, we talked to, and they are reasonably, well, amenable. And will realise that they're causing a nuisance, a public nuisance or noise to the residents. And that, you know, we've lived there for 19 years, so we know exactly what it's like to live where we live. And this has been the worst year that we've been here because of the operator, not the applicant, but the operator, Olivia's Bar, if that's what it's still called.
I'm not sure you need to particularly respond to that question, other than I'll say, yeah. One of the joys of licensing is we often see, find ourselves in this room with members of the public who've never seen the licensing act before and solicitors and barristers who've spent their whole life working on the licensing act. So you're not expected to know everything and we're here to help you through and make sure it's as fair a hearing as possible. I think my colleague has another question.
Yeah, sorry, just following on from David's questions about communication with tenants. Have you had any complaints from members of the public in regards to your current tenants at all?
None at all, none at all.
Thank you.
Right, well, if there are no further questions for the applicant, you have the opportunity to do some opening.
Thank you, Chairs, Councilors. It is an unusual application, without a doubt. But I would put to you, it's a very understandable application, following what my client's been through in recent years and looking at the climate as it was in October. And as we sit here today, the crystal ball, we would hope, would be full of roses, but it feels a little bit full of thorns at the moment with Ukraine, shortages of staffs, shortages of bread, milk and goodness knows what else, chicken being put into the press and we're being told about and the cost of living crisis and prices going up. So from a commercial landlord's perspective, this is a very sensible step to be undertaken. And it is not to pull the rug out from under the feet of those who are in the immediate vicinity. It is a commercial decision to provide the best insurance policy you can against the assets which he holds. With regard to the licensing objectives and this application, I would suggest that this licence has been before yourselves. It has been vetted, verified on various occasions. You have before you no objections from the responsible authorities, no objection from South Yorkshire Police, Sean Gibbons' team in health and safety. Jonathan Round did look at this on behalf of EPS. He did flag an issue. That's why the application was adjourned. In your papers, you can see that those issues have been resolved to his satisfaction. He is the objective assessor of noise. His teams have also been out and looked at the premises' operation and say that they are content with it. That, I think, is a separate matter to what is before you today because that is as to the current operation. But arguably, it proves that if the conditions put forward are adhered to, then they promote the licensing objectives adequately, proportionately and satisfactorily to make this site sit in its environment without impacting on the amenity of the immediate residents. So on the basis of that, we have got a well-bodied out application, which has operated previously without issues. Then the application itself, I would suggest, fulfills the criteria for grant. What I would say on a technical argument, and again, not wanting to sound demeaning to the residents, is that the evidence which they bring forward is not evidence as to this application and the applicant. Their evidence almost supports the conditions on the licence because if they're adhered to, then there should not be any issues arising. And under the FWAIS test, their evidence is not in direct nexus linked to this application itself. And I would respectfully submit that it should be disregarded. I know that sounds quite harsh and brutal, but I do feel that that is correct on the law because this is a fresh application and you are looking at the applicant and what they might do with the licence going forward. We have built in comfort blankets, safety, security, in that there is no DPS named on the licence. And if a 10 year, a long term tenancy were entered into by my client as a commercial landlord, then they would transfer the licence to the operator because they would be carrying the burden of implementing those conditions. And there again, the person coming through the door, taking over responsibility for running of the premises, could be looked at and checked by South Yorkshire Police, who we know are rigorous in looking at operators coming into the businesses, especially around West Street for various different reasons, to make sure crime and disorder doesn't escalate. Sir, I would suggest that the guidance at 9.43 is appropriate to this situation, but the conditions are appropriate and proportionate. This matter has been before the committee on various previous occasions. And to go against what has been approved previously would appear to be illogical and would go against paragraphs 9.44 and 10.10 of the guidance. I think that this is an odd application, but it is one where actually there are significant benefits to everybody by grant and creating the shadow licence behind a licence which appears to have questions as to its operation by the local residents. In respect of FWAIS, I would suggest paragraph 63 is the appropriate one to be considered and that there should have weighed very heavily with them, the evidence. Here, the evidence is really issues and concerns about another operator, another premises licence holder and not this, this client who I sit with today. Driving in, I did think a lovely phrase at this point would be, thinking about the Johnny Depp and Amber Heard trial, that it's like getting Leonardo DiCaprio into the box instead of Johnny Depp. That's the situation we've got here today. And I'll leave you with that one and ask you to seriously consider in your determinations, Grant.
Thank you. Could we have the options then, please, Clive?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The options for the committee today are to grant the licence in the terms as requested. You could grant the premises licence with added conditions if you deem fit and you could reject all or part of this application today, Chair.
Can I just say something, please, before I forget? Does it mean if this licence is granted, that there will be two licences currently running? So if this licence is granted and there is, and the, you mentioned if the conditions were adhered to, who is going to make sure that those conditions are adhered to?
Because there's no DPS appointed, the licence can't operate. So you will have two licences existing in tandem simultaneously. But you have to have a designated premises supervisor who has day to day control of the premises, i.e. manager, the person running the venue. Because this licence has no DPS named upon it, it can exist, but it can't operate. So you do have two running in existence simultaneously, but you cannot have both operating simultaneously because one doesn't have an appointed manager. And that is part of the set of mandatory conditions and it's one of every licence which is ever issued stipulates, you've got to have a personal licence holder next to the premises. And then the personal licence holder is generally your designated premises supervisor. So without that, you've got automatic breach of the mandatory condition, which means the premises cannot lawfully operate.
So this licence with no DPS, is it, is it your intention not to appoint DPS until it's convenient to yourselves?
So it would only be utilised if a situation arose whereby it was triggered. A situation would arise if the first licence is removed and that can be by- and that can be by way of revocation, surrender or due to insolvency and the licence lapses and dies. Then there would be a shadow or ghost licence sat behind it, which can be brought forward straight away without having to wait for the 28 day consultation, the period for listing a hearing and that timeline.
Okay, I understand a bit more now. So any objections we've got in the future should be against the, the current licence?
The one which has Olivia's in the name, you'll see that this licence did not have a name. It is just called the address of the premises, 130, 39 West Street. Seventy nine, it's just got the number.
Okay.
It's not got a name. So that's how you would distinguish these two licences very easily on the council's register, if granted.
Okay. You do understand why it would be confusing to me and to all of us.
I know Jane's tried to explain, but it is unusual.
Okay.
Yeah, so any decision we make today on this shadow licence wouldn't impact on the current operating licence. So whatever we, if we sit here and plot and put 3000 new conditions on, they don't apply to the licence that's currently operating at the premises.
Okay, but as we are here, it would be useful if Mr. Hogg, if he, if he's okay with that, to have some kind of contact detail, just in case this issue continues for another year.
Well, we will shortly be taking legal advice, at which stage we will send you into that room. So there'll be an opportunity to have a chat to each other while we take that advice and come to a decision.
Thank you.
So Clive, could we have the options then, please, sorry?
I'll try and repeat, I've just gone off my screen. Yeah, thank you again, Chair. The options to grant a licence in the terms requested, to grant a premises licence with any conditions added other than mandatory conditions and to reject whole or part of this application.
Thank you, Clive. And could I ask you to now leave the room while we take legal advice and come to a decision? And as soon as we've made that decision, we'll invite you back in and tell you what it is. Right, welcome back and thank you ever so much for your time and your presentations this morning. It's been really helpful. The decision of the Licensing Subcommittee this morning is to grant the shadow licence as applied for. And that's our decision. Aside from that decision, I would really recommend, given the evidence that you've got and the problems that you've had, that you simply contact licensing and say, I would like this, the current licence, not the shadow licence, the current licence to be reviewed. That will then be referred back to this committee. You can have the joy of coming to see happy smiling faces again. But at that time, you will actually have the current operators sat there. We will be able to question them and the evidence that you have collected will then become relevant in terms of determining that. I can't say what the outcome of that is, but there are lots of measures that we can take if we find in your favour, whereas today, the evidence you've got isn't actually about the people who are sat there. Therefore, our hands are tied in terms of doing anything. And we would hope that they will be looking to let that premises to responsible operators in future who won't cause you issues. But if there are issues from any operator at any time, the easiest thing to, the best thing to do is to contact licensing and ask for a review of the licence. It will then come to us to look at the real issues that are causing you concerns. Because we don't want people, you know, we want responsible operators, we want people to enjoy being in Sheffield city centre. But we want people to enjoy living in Sheffield city centre, to be able to sleep at night would be a nice thing. So I would recommend you do that. But the decision this morning is to grant as applied for.
Thank you, Chair. And we've just had dialogue outside and Mr. Fogg has given his details to the residents. And obviously, as landlord who holds the title to the property and the terms of the lease, he has significant influence. So he has confirmed that he'll be speaking with the current operator. So again, another unintended consequence of the application, but hopefully a very positive one.
That's much appreciated. And we always ask, you know, you say you have good relationships with some of the bars in the city centre. And we would like, always like people to be able to sort things out informally. But the review process is here if that doesn't happen, so, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.